Good evening, everyone. My name is Ronald Presner. I'm chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Mount Pleasant. Before I start tonight's meeting, I want to wish everyone in my board and all of you out there a happy Thanksgiving. Eat, drink, and be safe, okay? Some of you have come before us in the past, so I don't want to go into how we run the meeting, but you'll do it through observation. The first application is John Scavelli. And that's the applicant for John and Jessica Matoon. Premises located at 11 Wappinger Trail, Park Cliff Manor, designated on a tax map. Town of Mount Pleasant is 98.16-2-11. Applications for a proposed 34 by 16 in-ground pool and deck to an existing single-family dwelling on a legal standard parcel of 1.47 acres in the R40 zone, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And you needed two variances. One, rear yard setback 50 feet is required, proposing 25, I'll say 25 and a half. And the minimum distance to the main structure, 20 feet, and you're offering 15.
Correct, yes.
At our last meeting, we played around how you can handle this pool. So what you basically have done is move the pool back two feet, which reduces the amount of variance that you're applying for.
Yeah, we also shrunk the pool size down as well. So it did get pushed back further to increase the distance away from the house. And the pool foot perim, we proposed actually to make it two feet shorter in width and depth as well.
All right, wonderful. I want to thank you for doing what you did. I have no objection to what you've completed. All right. So I'm just going to ask the other members of my board what, to ask you some questions, because we've gone over this already.
Sure, yep.
All right, Ms. Novak?
We were out there at site inspections. We'd gone over this last time. At this point, I have no further questions.
All right, Mrs. DeChico?
Just a few questions. So by doing so, you've reduced the requested variances. Is that fair to say?
So we pushed it a little bit further back in order to, it's, you know, from feedback last meeting was to get more distance away from the house. So we did do that, and then we also shrunk it down going toward the back. So we did tweak the numbers a bit, but we're trying to address the board's comments.
So now it was further away from the house, but there's also more room to walk between for guests and family members?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Dorr?
I have no further questions.
And Ms. Lapatos?
Nothing other than I just want to compliment you for working with the board to try to identify a location for the pool that was more consistent with the code. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion on this application?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a three-simile.
All right, motion by Mr. Dorr. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Novak. Mrs. DeChico?
Aye.
Ms. Lapatos?
I vote ayes to both applications.
Okay, and I vote yes also. So you're all approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck. Enjoy your pool.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Enjoy it. It's going to be beautiful.
Thank you very much.
The next application is Michael Stallone. Premises at 145 Bennetts Place in Hawthorne.
How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand, please.
Yeah.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help your God?
I do.
No relation to sly, are you?
No.
Ah, well.
Never checked, honest.
Your property is located on the tax map at 111.12-1-11. The application is seeking legalization of an existing nine-foot, six-foot retaining wall in the rear yard, also legalizing an existing six-foot fence in the side yards, only with the single-family dwelling on a legal substandard parcel, but that means nothing, in the R10 zone.
Yes.
Fence height, four feet required, existing is six, proposing six, two feet.
That's correct.
Maximum wall height in the rear, only six feet required, 9.6 feet is existing. So you're asking for 3.6-foot variance.
That's correct.
Go. So explain to me, for example, the six-foot in the back. You have a lot of, I wasn't at inspections on Saturday.
Okay.
So let me, you know, tell me what you want to do over there, other than the fence.
The intent was to raise the fence, the additional footage, so we could flatten the yard, so that my son, it's my son's house, he couldn't be present, he's working, so that his three-year-old daughter could utilize the yard safely, because the pitch was pretty good going down. So that was the intent, to kind of flatten.
Why do I feel we had an application very similar to yours?
Well, the neighbor on the right, facing the backyard.
There was a high.
The neighbor on the right did it probably many years ago, before we, you know, my son bought the house.
Yeah.
And the neighbor on the left has intentions to apply to do the same, because it's a significant pitch, so children couldn't play safely.
Right.
And that's really the intent and the goal.
I have no further questions. Ms. Novak?
I will tell you, that as someone who is scared of heights, I would not go closer than 10 feet to the edge, because my elbows were telling me not to.
Right.
I saw what's going on back there. I could completely imagine, in the shape of the neighborhood, that pitch. I did see how you lowered it.
Right.
That is a heavy, heavy drop-off back there.
Right, right.
More just making the record for our observations that we saw on Saturday, but I don't have any actual questions as to why you need those walls.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. DeChico?
Can you tell us a little more about the history of the construction that was done and the shape that it's currently in? It looked like the wall that was there didn't look that old, and it looked like the whole section of it had fallen halfway down the hill towards the highway.
Right.
So can you give us a little bit of context and history about what you've done back there in the past?
Well, when you say what we've done, we wanted to raise the wall.
Right.
I don't know the specifics of what's going on. I don't live there, my son does.
Okay.
I'm here on his behalf, because he's working. But certainly, we had engineers look into it all, and everything seemed to be okay. So now we want to proceed forward and make sure it's done safely, so that the kids can play. That's really the objective.
The reason why, because your answer is interesting. I don't mean to express, you know, dissatisfaction with the application. I think it's needed, or it seems to be needed, but I do want to understand, because a significant portion of the wall, an intact piece of the block wall, looked like it had fallen off and is now halfway down the hill.
Right.
So I'm trying to understand, is that an old wall that was there, or is this part of the new construction?
It was part of, part of the existing wall. Part of the existing wall and part of the new wall.
Okay.
And what had happened is, when we were given the stop work order.
Okay.
There was no top piece put on it.
Okay.
And it's been now well over a year, but through the winter, I think water had seeped down, even though it was filled, and that's where the problem came in.
Mr. Dorr?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I wasn't there, but you mentioned the stop work order.
Yes.
Which now sent you to planning, because it's a steep slope area?
I'm sorry?
Are you familiar with that? Did your son mention any of that? Because you need a permit to continue the work.
That's what we need, yeah.
Yeah, but you need a permit from, or the approval from the planning committee?
Yeah.
They're currently in planning.
So you're currently in planning.
Right.
So planning is sent to us because of the height of the wall, correct?
Right, right.
Mr. Lapatos?
Yeah, I just want to point out some of the unique features of this property. Everybody has alluded to the safety issue, specifically, historically, we don't approve of walls of this height.
Okay.
Because of the unique nature of this property, the fact that you do have a significant safety issue that you're addressing with this wall, it needs to be this height in order to hold back that cliff, which is attempting to crawl down the hill to the highway.
Right.
So for the reasons that everybody placed upon the record, the steepness of that slope, the fact that there has already been an event that caused some of that existing wall to collapse, with the approval, certainly of the engineered department, the nine-six-foot wall that you're requesting appears to me to be entirely appropriate, given the situation on the property, the unique situation. And for those reasons, I have support for the application. No further questions.
Okay, thank you, George.
Mr. Chairman, I understand the wall, raising the wall, but what is the reason of a six-foot fence on the back as opposed to, you know, a five-foot or a six?
Pre-exist.
What's the side?
No, just telling you so.
Do you have a drawing of?
I do.
Can I say that, please?
I do.
Just a minute.
I do have a few more questions. To Mr. Dorr's point, the side yard fence, the old package.
I have no idea, I'm sorry. My son bought the house.
Yes, sir.
I guess my son bought the house, I think about three and a half, four years ago.
Would you have any recollection if it was there when you bought the house?
Yeah, I believe it was.
And to clarify to the record, the wall that you're requesting was 9.6 feet, but you're also putting a fence on, so the structure of the wall itself is 9.6?
Yes.
But then on top of the 9.6, you're putting a fence?
Well, we will have to.
Right.
Yeah, for safety.
But that is not going to be, that is going to be offset from the wall?
It would be placed on top of the wall, I believe.
No, you can't.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm really not sure.
Which is why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you show me?
I'm not sure.
The PAX line here, is this, what part of this is the existing, the wall that you're looking at? You're looking for approval on?
Okay, yes.
On the map, but show me here, so I know. Is it the back here?
Yeah, this is the back wall.
Okay, this is irrelevant, right?
This is the wall, any question?
All right, now, the problem comes up, if you're going to put a fence up, it's got to be off the wall, about a foot.
The building department gave.
It's got to be on your property, yeah. Your property.
Presumably.
Yeah, so you're going to have to put along here, one foot off this wall.
The building department identified that it's greater.
I don't know.
I have chain rail, I have four-foot chain rail, and I'd put evergreens around, so instead of looking like a prison yard, it looks more like a.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to capture for the record that we're just discussing with the applicant on the plans and trying to point out approximately where he would have to put a fence to be compliant with the code, but obviously, that's casual discussion, it's all subjective approval by the building department.
So what we will note on this application is that the fence that you're requesting, part of the wall, must be a minimum of one foot off the concrete.
Probably more like five.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
I'll just make one point, Mr. Chairman, before I make an application for approval. There seems to be some uncertainty about whether or not the new final construction would include both a stone retaining wall and a fence on top of the stone retaining wall.
No, the fence was just told.
Again, if that were the case, I'm just going to make this for the record, if that were the case, the height would aggregate.
Okay.
Meaning that the height of the stone and the height of the fence on top would all be included in the proposal that you're making. And again, anything over six feet would require a variance. So you're requesting right now a 9.6-foot height?
Right, right.
That's what we would be in a position to approve this evening.
Okay.
If there were any construction on the property that wound up exceeding that height, you would have to get another variance before you could proceed with that.
I see.
Construction.
But if we put it in front of the retaining wall, it would be okay?
It would not aggregate, and only the fence height would be.
And you could put up a six-foot rear fence.
Right.
Rear yard fence, off the wall, without any variance.
Okay, sounds good. Okay.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make an application at this time?
All right, Ms. Lapatos?
To approve Z25-35, both the maximum fence height for side yard and the maximum wall height for rear yard, as submitted, again, with the understanding that the aggregate height of the rear wall would not exceed 9.6 feet.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeChico.
Approve.
All right, Ms. Novak, Dorr?
Approve.
Okay, Chairman approves, carried farther.
Okay.
Congratulations.
We're good. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving to you guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, okay, good night.
The next application is 2544, Joseph Citra.
I've got five on each hand.
Or is it Sif, Sif? I can't tell whether it's a T or an F.
Sif.
Sif, okay. Raise your right hand. Testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be gone.
Yes, sir.
And you are?
My name is John Anastasiew, and I'm the architect for the owners.
Okay, and you're located, your office?
320 Kelly Street, Hawthorne, New York.
Okay. This is regarding the premises located at 45 Andrea Lane in Thornwood, and designated on the tax map of the town of Mount Pleasant, 89/106.20-4-50. Phew, that's a mouthful. The application is for proposed one-story addition, legalizing, legalization of an existing shed with a single, a single-family dwelling on a parcel of 14,000 square feet, the R10 zone. There are two variances you're seeking. One is a combined yard setback of 25 is required, 37 is existing, proposing 22, so you're asking for a 2.2-foot variance.
Correct.
That's one. The other one, side yard setback, it's 10 feet, 23 is existing, 8.4 proposing, and it's a 1.6-foot.
Correct.
Be creative, as I always tell you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I was retained by the owners for a one-story addition. This is their existing house right now, and the way that it's situated, the only location that we could put an addition would be on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, they have an existing driveway, and the side yard on that side is 14.4 feet. It's a small house, their family is growing, so they wanted to add an additional wing, keep it all on one level. So this is what we're proposing here, an addition on the side, as resulted at, and this is a modest, they're modest-sized rooms. There's nothing really extra-large about any of these rooms, but just based on the layout, we had to come out 15 feet from the existing edge of the house. There's a little corridor here, and two bedrooms, and a bathroom in between. So because of that configuration, we end up with one side yard of 8.4 feet, and the existing side is 14.4 feet. When I met with Kathy and building inspector, we determined that since the work is occurring on this side, that we would request a variance for the minimum of 10-foot on one side, and then between the two, we need another variance for the combined yards. And this is what it's going to look like from the front. We're trying to maintain the character of the existing house. As you're looking at the house on the left-hand side, there are some tall shrubs there that I think would kind of block this as well. So this is pretty much what we're proposing.
We had an application come before us for a similar application on Elwood Avenue. And the fact that, in that case, the addition, small addition, was on the right side of the property, and they had to go at eight feet. It's an improvement. I mean, I'm not, I don't think that 1.6 feet is going to make that much of a difference. Maybe if there's some vegetation. I haven't had a chance to go out to look at it, so bear with me. If there's some sort of vegetation separating him and his neighbor, you know, that would be a positive thing. If it's existing, great, you know, no problem. I have no further comment. It's a very good presentation. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Novak, and let her ask her questions.
We were out there on Saturday. We did rough step it out. You're correct, there are shrubs over there. It does seem like it will be shielded from that side, and there still is a somewhat significant amount of walk space, et cetera. I don't have any questions. The pictures do help kind of paint the picture of what you're actually going for on the interior of building it out. No questions.
Mrs. DeChico?
I know, I know you went through the application, but since you are working from, with a lot of space here, can you try and clarify exactly why you need these variances, and why you couldn't just work within the code, seeing as though you do have a decent amount of space on the left side of the house to work with?
This is the existing house here. And currently, this is one of the bedrooms. So it's a two-bedroom, it's a small house. We were looking at this layout, and we did look, we explored different options. We're trying to be economical and work with the existing layout to minimize any interior alterations that would have to get done. To accomplish that, we are making this one bedroom a dining area, and it's also going to serve as a pass-through to be able to get to the wing, where we're constructing the two bedrooms.
Right. And you said the bedrooms are not that big, but if you took away the two feet or approximately, how, would that fundamentally change the size of the bedrooms, or not? I'm trying to understand from the design standpoint, how crucial those two feet are to giving, to giving usable, practical bedrooms.
Okay. And you also point out that in the back, they have like an existing patio, that they don't want to disturb for economical purposes. To be able to access these two bedrooms, we need a little hallway space. These are all modest-sized rooms. This, their master bedroom is 13'10". It's not elaborate. If it was like 16 feet, I would say, sure, we could bring it down to 14 feet. But, you know, and the same thing over here, this is 13'10", and we didn't want to cut it in this way to pull this whole thing in, because it would affect the appearance of the existing house, and it would throw it off. Right now, it's symmetrical, and we want to end up with a nice product that doesn't also look like it was just like a faulty add-on. We were sensitive to the fact of trying to minimize this as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dorr?
Building on top of what Mrs. DeChico already said, other than the patio in the back, the reason you're not going back that way? I mean, how much are you saving by not disturbing the patio? We're talking, you follow what I'm saying? If you went back, or the other option is going up?
We explored going up. They wanted to keep everything on one level, so they wouldn't have to deal with stairs. I think they're thinking long-term, have everything on one level. But the encroachment also would affect the front, in terms of like cutting it in front of the house. And in the back, there's more architecture that would get disrupted if we did that. There was a window, the back is all finished. They're trying to minimize what they have to do to the existing house, so that they could put their funds towards the addition.
So this addition will also have a basement, because there's a staircase in that one spot, if I'm not?
It's going to, it's not going to be a basement, it's just for that corridor to give them access to an existing basement that they currently have no access to, from inside the house.
Is the door called door on the outside for that?
There is not. The access into the existing basement, as it is now, is through the garage. But the only way that they can get to the garage is from the outside. The basement and the first floor do not communicate with each other right now. So the purpose of the stair is to give them access to the basement from inside the house.
Very well said.
I have no further questions.
As I now understand how they do not communicate with one another, I don't have any questions either. You communicated very well with us, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sitting on the counter. Oh, wait a minute, is there anybody for or against?
I don't think so. Is there anybody here for or against this application? No.
All right, based on that, I make a motion to approve Z2544, as submitted.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Lapatos. Ms. Novak?
I vote aye.
All right, Mrs. DeChico?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye. They're all set.
Fantastic, thank you, everyone.
You too, thank you.
I heard that the weight-loss stores are going to be open early today after Thanksgiving.
They'll stay open afterwards as well.
So I keep moving.
Next application is 25-45, Stacy Calta.
Hi. Who is Stacy Calta?
Stacy Calta works for one of our contracts with the DEP. She's a consultant for our ISPM contract.
Raise your right hand, please. Testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so be gone.
Yes, it is.
You are?
I'm Justin Ravelino. I'm with engineering, DEP's Engineering Design and Construction Bureau.
This is a application for the Department of Environmental Protection. I hate these DEPs, DWI, because DWI could be driving while intoxicated, it could be dancing with Irene, you know, it could be either one.
I always tell everybody, we have our own language full of acronyms.
So this is the premises located at 2 Walker Road in Valhalla, designated on a tax map, town of Mount Pleasant, has 116.16-1-2, correct?
Yep.
The application is for a proposed construction of a new chamber building as part of the DEP's. DEP's Kensico Eastview Connection, project on the legal standard parcel of eighty-seven acres in an OB-two zone. The variances are requested as the building height.
Yes.
Forty feet is required, you're asking for forty-six.
Right, average forty-six.
Okay.
All right. So, right now, this is our, or was our current site, it's a little bit under construction now, so there is some activity, not in the area where we're talking about today, though, where the ECC Eastview Connection Chamber's gonna be. But the dash-yellow box is the location for where that building will eventually wind up.
Uh, just to get this straight, the location of this is off of one-hundred?
Yes, so Grasslands Road is south, and then Walker is, uh...
Okay, just so we got an understanding of where we are.
Yep.
Okay.
And so just to the south of that boxed area is our existing Cadell Ultraviolet Disinfection Facility, and just to the east of that is our North Four Bay Facility. So the new structure we're proposing is going to match design of these existing facilities and blend in. So as mentioned, the variance request is an average of forty-six feet. The building varies in difference between forty-one and fifty-one, depending where you look. The existing ground elevations, as we currently have it, are between three-hundred-and-forty-two feet and three-hundred-and-sixty, but our proposed ground elevations, when we're done with construction, will be three-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred-and-sixty feet. The building height, the reason we have what we have, or why we're proposing what we're proposing, is 'cause we need to support a lot of internal systems that are part of that structure, which includes a bridge crane, some water quality equipment, electric equipment, gate actuators for the tunnel. And we did receive Public Design Commission final approval. And then the rest of this presentation is just rendering, so this is a view from the west looking, uh, from the east looking west. This is where our vehicle entrance will be. This is looking east from our driveway within the campus itself. So you'll see, to the right of that, is the North Four Bay, so it does look similar to our new structure here. And then behind us is the correctional facility from Westchester County. This is a very high-tech rendering. Where we boxed out is essentially where the line of sight is gonna be for this new ECC. So in the foreground here, we're, we're looking off of Walker. That's the police booth where they check in and let you into the site, and then you go a little bit deeper into campus, and that's where the ECC is. You can see the North Four Bay right, to the right of it, and again, the correctional facility right behind it there. So that red outline is essentially where the height of the ECC would look when you're looking from Walker. And then, these are just various elevations. So you'll see, what I was talking about, elevation three-fifty, to elevation three-sixty here, and then going up to elevation four-oh-one, there are your differences for building height.
On the right of that drawing, what is the depth into this, where it's, I'll say the upside-down L?
This...
Lower right of the drawing. I can't read it from here.
Ten feet looks around.
Yeah, it's ten feet. That'll be three-fifty to three-sixty.
And that's the back of the building?
That's, yeah, that's our, our south end of the building. So, that's what you see from Grasslands.
Now, you, you need that extra six feet. What's it gonna be in that building? Pumps?
There will be what we call stop shutters, which are used to close flow from the tunnel to the CDUV if we needed to. So the bridge crane that's in there will need to lift those shutters, they're about twelve feet high. There could be pumps if we need to. So we have in that shaft two, what we call unwatering casings, or, or well casings, and in the event we need to unwater the tunnel, this would be the location where it's done. So we would bring in some pretty substantial pumps, they would be lifted and lowered into the tunnel from here.
Now, I know the main building you have over there, a lot of it is underground.
Right. Yep.
Is there a way we can reduce the height on this topographically?
We, we did look at that, so what makes this tricky for us is that this sits directly on top of our shaft that we're also constructing, so they kind of go hand-in-hand in terms of the elevation of the shaft itself, where we're bringing water up to, and this, where this building's foundation really begins.
Well, on the, staying to that same right side of the drawing, the height of the building at that point is what?
So, so if we minus the ten, it would be around forty-one feet.
No, I'm talking about what's on surface, between the surface and the roof.
Yes, that's forty, so your elevation three-sixty to elevation four-oh-one, it would be forty-one feet.
What if the back became the front?
So there's a roadway back there that's a little bit higher than where the front, you know, where you're talking about with the front. So we have one roadway kind of coming up higher, one roadway coming in low. So we're meeting the elevations of the existing campus that has those two means of getting around the facility.
'Cause I was thinking a possibility of burying part of that building.
Right.
With some dirt.
Yeah.
And you can plant your tulips or whatever you want over there to reduce the overall height.
I thought of, I thought of that exact same thing, too. But that, that's part of the reason, the slopes around this facility are pretty steep. We do, we do have steep slopes that we presented in the site point application all around here, so I think we tried to lower or kind of, you know, mess with that incline a little bit, it would potentially increase those percentages.
I would like to see if you can use your imagination to somehow reduce the height somewhat. The roof, I assume, has air conditioning systems on it?
It mainly has solar panels on it.
Solar panels.
Yeah, to help with our sustainability efforts.
So they're only good when the sun shines.
Yeah.
Okay? The, but that's insignificance, that you're only, it's like six, six inches off the roof if you lay them flat.
Yeah, so they're not, they're not large. Yeah, so out here, I'll go back to this, this is my concern. You see the roadway, both of these roadways are going to stay, right? The one that's going right through the checkered box and the one right above it, and that's where the elevations are really different, and we have faults still existing even after we construct this Eastview Connection Chamber. One's gonna let our operations staff go around the north end of the site to get to the North Four Bay over there. The other roadway kind of gets them to the Cadell Ultraviolet Disinfection Facility, so creates that mobility for them on the campus.
On this picture, if I'm familiar with the area, that, that campus, the tunnel from the Haller is coming into that property where?
The existing tunnel?
No, the new one.
Oh, the new one, I'm sorry.
The new one coming in, 'cause this is to adapt that new tunnel, correct?
Correct. So it's...
So is that coming in from underneath the E on-site, on the word site, or is it...
It's coming in the north end, so it's, it's not going underneath any of our existing structures.
That's not what I'm talking about. I was using the E letter, as is it coming from that?
Oh, no.
Or is it coming into where that yellow is?
No, it's coming more towards the, the right-hand side of the page.
I'm gonna be difficult, can you show us?
Yeah.
Talk to me like I'm five.
So we're, we're coming this way, then shooting out of that way, north.
All right, so it's going on an angle?
Yeah.
And the medical center is where?
Uh, right to the north.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, to your point of burying, so they've gotta go on what their tunnel is coming in with, because this is over the connection into that, 'cause the main purpose of this tunnel is to bring that water into that infrared, something, not infrared, ultraviolet.
It was my understanding that this was more of a maintenance building than it was...
It's for the tunnel connection.
And it go part of the tunnel.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a direct connection from...
It's, it's part of the tunnel, 'cause, I mean, he keyed me in on it when he said about lifting the shields, to be able to shut them off up and down, to be able to service the tunnel, of which a lot of the tunnels coming down the aqueduct do not currently have. I, I mean, it's in an area that is not affecting anybody, per se. I mean, nobody in the prison is gonna complain. And visibility from either Route one-hundred, Walker, or the rest of the medical center facility, it's below the height of any of those structures currently there.
No, I, I agree.
So, so to, to try to, my opinion is to try to manipulate six feet to go down lower for something that's already have a partial approval from the state is...
The only reason I was doing this is to sort, get a route, so that the both buildings would be on relative height.
The planning board already approved, so...
Yeah. You guys want the planning board ready for all this?
Yes.
And it already was approved.
So I did have a question, so on, further, it's what Mr. Dorr just said, can you go to the, the picture, we have that, the red outline of, feels like the, the view from the gate when you drive? All right, so to Mr. Dorr's point...
You can't even see that from the road.
Right, but it, it looks like from, from that rendering, the new building will actually be lower in height than other buildings that are currently there. Is that fair to say, or is that accurate, or is that just because this is a kind of a basic rendering?
Yeah, it, it's perspective, so it looks lower than the police booth. Police booth is maybe, you know, twenty-something feet.
Well, it's not lower than, I'm talking more about like the other, the other main shaft and buildings that, that are there. Like, is it gonna be tall, taller than those, or, or lower than?
So with the North Four Bay, it's about the same height. It's very similar. So like, we have that one point where we're forty-one feet, the North Four Bay is at forty-point-six-seven at, at a certain point.
And these, but it's gonna be taller than the, than the UV building?
Yes, 'cause the UV building is sunk a little bit into the site.
It's also five stories down.
Right.
Yeah.
Ms. Lapatos, you got any questions?
Can we finish, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have any questions to build upon. Everybody's asked everything I think is relevant. The fact that this location is a non-residential location, it is, uh, in effect a commercial site, I don't see any impact on the environmental conditions, um, it's not an eyesore, so I have no questions.
Okay. I have one question to ask you. When are you gonna open up Westlake Drive?
Westlake Drive? We're working on it. I think we're hoping another few months, but, uh, construction's nearly complete.
The roads? So you say by springtime it would be open?
I think that's, that's the hope. By spring, hopefully, you know, late winter, early spring.
Okay. I have no further questions. Is there anyone here for or against this application? No?
The chairman, based on no opposition or, or con from the audience, I make a motion to approve Z-2545 as submitted.
Okay. I have a, a application to approve by Mr. Dorr. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
A second by Mr. Lapatos. And Ms. Novak?
Aye.
Mr. DeChico?
Aye.
All right, but chairman votes aye, so good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone.
I expect that road to be open in the spring. Okay, our last applica, uh, last application for tonight is Jacqueline Taylor. I'm gonna ask a favor of you.
Sure.
I bet you wanna be talking to the godfather, okay? I'm gonna let Mr. Lapatos do twenty-five forty-nine for me. I'm losing my voice here. Okay?
So I'll just introduce your application, you're Jacqueline Taylor?
Tyler.
I'm sorry, Tyler.
That's okay.
Uh, and you're here for Thomas Meyer, uh, for the premises located at twenty-two Pine Road in Valhalla, designated on the tax assessment map of the town of Mount Pleasant as eighty-nine slash one-twelve point twenty dash three dash thirty. The application is for a proposed two-story addition with a new front porch, and the legalization of an existing shed in the rear yard of an existing single-family dwelling on a legal substandard parcel in the ER-20 zone. You're requesting three variances, the first being a front yard setback, the required is fifty feet, uh, existing is forty-point-four, so you're proposing a small change to forty-point-nine-one. Still, the total variance would be nine-point-zero-nine feet. A second variance for the rear yard setback pertaining to the shed, required is ten feet, existing at this time is one foot. You're proposing keeping the shed in that location for one foot, which would require a nine-foot variance. And with regard to the shed, you're also seeking a side yard setback, again, required is ten feet, existing is one-point-nine-six. You're proposing to keep it at one-point-nine-six, which would require an eight-point-zero-four-foot At this time, Mr. Chairman, would you like to swear in the applicant?
Do that for me, George.
Okay. Ms. Tyler, would you please raise your right hand? You swear to answer truthfully all questions put to you by the members of the board, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Sir, would you be addressing the board as well? Do you wanna be sworn in? You wanna, okay. What's your name, sir?
Carl Navarro.
Okay, Mr. Navarro, raise your right hand. You swear to answer truthfully all questions put to you by the members of the board, so help you God?
So help me God, yes.
Thank you. Okay. First, with respect to the application itself, I see that the shed is existing and you're looking to keep it without change, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And the, uh, front yard setback that applies to the addition, if we could first address, what are you proposing to do with the addition?
Thank you, that's how I wanted to start, so I appreciate the lead-in. So, as you mentioned, we are here tonight for both variance for the house, and then two variances for the existing shed. So I wanted to start with the main residence. Currently, the, as you mentioned in the lead-in, that the property is a subpar property, so between that and the, the existing drainage easement, that's led to the hardships of meeting the required setbacks. So the rear setback and front setback currently are non-conforming. The garage is situated, as you said, about forty-foot-six inches off the property line at the front side. We've managed to withhold, to hold all of these setback requirements on the sides and the rear, except for the front. So I'm gonna actually pull myself over there. The reason for the positioning of most of this, and actually, the, the light gray area here is the existing residence footprint, the dark gray are the areas that we're proposing the addition to. Most of the positioning for this came as a result of where the existing structural wall is inside. I know you all took a site visit, but you aren't, I don't believe you went inside or were able to see any of that, so there's a structural wall down the middle portion of this, and that has driven the placement of a lot of the other program elements within the residence, specifically related to the stairs and where we can punch through up to the new second floor. So those are positioned right along the structural wall, which then sets up the...